That was taken care of. So, at that time, I took a look at the documents that they had sent to their line of communication. And lo and behold, there was some stuff that should've been in the most of the trail stuff they got from the back end. But there was one line that was supposed to be in it is on Trail Maintenance. And that was...
Did I tell you where you have to go through line number?
I've got to go through line number.
That's ridiculous.
It is completely ridiculous. And that's the way it goes. Yeah. And then I go through it and I find that and then I think, oh, it's your board. I guess if I never get through it, line by line.
We should send it back to them with one line.
I think we're pretty good.
Well, I think under line, there's a record point in it. And they got it written down, but supposedly it's back in. And I checked with Mitch a couple of weeks ago. And his latest is... I touched base with Council staff and her boss has reviewed the document. She'll text me later this week with an estimated time of writing. And she will also let me know that there are any further revisions. That's basically what I'm saying here. The answer is Monday. So, it's been in the hands of County Council for almost a year to date. It was May of 2012.
That's one of the most important things we've ever been able to do. Well, and it was already approved by staff. Oh, and it was ready to go.
Yeah.
It was about it's going to be three or four months procedural stuff. And going through the county council, whether they, or the words they want to change. It's like installed again. Now, they are, you know, out there in town and country. They have stopped any progress on any of those community CSPs until they get through the town and country because they want them all to come in alignment with what town and country requirements are. Our group OB and OB, that's already been signed into the letter as a what lasts for better. And I thought I can remember that will make us, you know, make the county do the same thing.
Right, we should be number one on the list.
Exactly. So, I just wondered if the person in charge of that particular phase has just kind of stopped or gotten out of the mode of processing everything.
Well, I think, I mean, with your permission, I'll contact Rosal and say, what's wrong? Because she can split the fire in these areas and also have me down. So, down is what you guys are doing this time. I'm talking about.
Motion, motion.
Let it fight. Let it fight.
I was a favor.
But we did get the dogs. Dogs, we have six dogs. And the tangers, we got more than tangers.
Awesome. So, less than ten acres is two?
Less than ten acres is five to less than ten is two. One to five.
So, if you have five acres, you have one. You have ten acres, you have two. And more than ten acres, you have two.
Is that ten acres or frozen?
It is ten acres.
You could change to frozen some time.
It's a long time no see. Yeah. Four months. Should feel privileged that I'm the first one every time. In any case, I just wanted to present some statistics to you since we missed July. I also gather since July, well, since we missed August meeting, I have July statistics as well as August statistics. In terms of collisions for July, we had a total of 27 recorded in and around the area of Algodolce, three of which were caught by DUI driver. Of those three, only one of them was injurious to anyone else other than the driver. Total injury collisions was 15 for that month. In that month, I also have arrests to six, which were DUIs. We had a total of 12 arrests for that month. No drug arrests. And we had a felony hit and run, which occurred on July 15th this year at 6:25 in the morning. It was a motorist who hit a bicyclist who's driving on Sierra Highway. Motorist decided not to stop, but then later, after talking to his family, the person decided to turn himself in, so.
Was it bicyclist?
It was a bicyclist, yeah.
How was he frozen in jail?
It's classified as major injuries, not life threatening, but major injuries. Anything with the highway patrol, as long as the person has suffered a broken bone, then I just consider it major. It could've been anything, even a clavicle. In August, we had a total of 31 recorded traffic collisions in among the area, three of which as well were also DUI related. Only one injury again as a result of one of those collisions. A total of 12 in three traffic collisions of the 31. DUIs for DUI arrests for the month of August then were 14. One drug arrest we did have. And then felony for that month, we had a DUI traffic collision. This one actually occurred on the 14, somewhere around the, I think it was the 2000 level, which is between Soladad and Algodolce, where somebody was driving an RV, ran off the road, injured his passenger. And again, that was considered major injuries too. So, it was, and it was determined to be DUI related. Other than that, we don't have any other significant arrests or investigations at this time. I also had statistics for citations. And these are for the month of July. But Sierra Highway specifically, there were 65 citations in July. The incorporated streets around Algodolce were 32. And Soladad Canyon in particular was 11 on that roadway. We're also getting ready for the Algodolce Country Fair and Parade. I've been working with the parade committee. Rosie Hapley actually had a meeting with her in regards to doing the traffic control. So, we've got that all sorted out. I'll have six volunteers. I'll be working myself and then I'll have six volunteers working for that event, as well as two officers assigned for that day. So, we should have enough coverage. Everything should be running very smoothly as long as the rest of the parade or the rest of the country fair is going well. I think we're good. Yeah.
Hey, first time over here.
The department has, I guess they've gone into newer publications. They haven't done catalyst brochures in a long time, so, and it's probably budgetary reasons for the most part. So, there's a few new ones here. I'll be putting up.
Oh, let's see.
All right.
Right where?
Just on the other table, okay. In particular, there's a push. I think I've spoken to the town council at one time about senior drivers. And again, it was a big push, so age well, drive safe, something certainly you can take. And I will run a few here in case you have any interest. You know, if you don't need me, then you can just leave it there. But for senior drivers in particular, I think that they should be looking for mostly health related, obviously, and the fact that, you know, that you have to be responsible.
Remind me, I forgot to mention last time. Our meeting room is available for you guys to hold your council meetings there, either on a one-time basis if you wanted an introduction to all the audio visual capabilities we have, or if you wanted to, you know, hold it there on a more regular basis, it's certainly available to you.
Thanks.
All right. So, let me go to my notes. So, new hours started in September. We listened to the community feedback. We had folks that wanted us open earlier and later. So, we're starting, last week now, we open at 10 o'clock, Monday through Saturday, instead of 11, so 10 o'clock every day. And then on Mondays and Tuesdays, we'll be staying open until 8 o'clock. And let's see. I've been doing more outreach. That's one of my goals as I start my second year here at the Actonamidol State Library. In August, we did with the Friends of the Actonamidol State Library, the seniors club luncheon. We had about 55 people there, so I did a presentation for the seniors on library resources. And then I did the Actonamidol State School District there in service day with all of their teachers and administrators and did a presentation for them. And then in October, I'll be at a table at the Vescas Rocks Community Day. And I'm sorry, I didn't know about the fair prior to right now. I just looked it up right now, it's like the 21st, so I'm sorry I didn't know about that ahead of time, so I kind of planned to have something for the luck right there. And upcoming events, the annual pen tell bookmark contest just launched. This is done through the supervisor's office. So, there's all different grade levels and there's information in your packets. Each library will have winners for each grade levels and then we submit them to the supervisor's office and they pick the final winners. And then the kids, there's like four age groups. The kids that have a winning entry, they actually print their bookmarks and make them available for distribution for the rest of the year at the library. So, and they get like a school and recognition at the board supervisor's meeting, so it's a big deal. So, we have entry forms at the library and then our children's librarian is going to be sending entry forms to the different schools. Okay. And then we're trying out a new event this month, at the end of the month, family game night. So, taking advantage of our later hours, and we do have a lot of board games that just aren't utilized right now, so we figured we'll just put them out, set them up, invite them to drop in, have it be like a casual three hour program. Come and play for free and don't have to worry about setting up or cleaning up, we'll do that for you. And then left, so we have some fundraising info, it's that time of year. The end of this month, the Friends of the Actonamidol State Library are having their movie trivia night fundraiser on September 28th, and tickets are still available. And there's information, a flyer for that. And then coming up, just to put it on your calendar, the end of October is their semi-annual used book sale. And that's going to be the 25th, 26th, and 27th of October. And they're adding an additional component this year on the 27th, on Sunday. There's also going to be a parking lot jump in the Trump sale. So, folks will be able to come and basically sell stuff out of their cars. They buy a parking lot space and then they keep all the money from, you know, whatever this is called.
That's great.
Do you have any questions or concerns?
All good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, council members, and thank, you know, Mary and Don, and I may not know the three or two that are missing, but thank you for having me and of course, the attendees. And I have, in this engineering game, Hunzaker, who's my civil engineer and planner of the property. My name is Michael Lafferty, I'm the developer of Umbria Estates, right out of Oakland. And I'm the developer, engineering game, is again Hunzaker, is the land manager. Again, thank you for having us and giving us a short period of time to just update you. Last time I was here was about two years ago. And just for the record, there was one town, one council meeting and one grassroots meeting where we did a publication, invited a town, and many showed up with assessment and opinion. And we, like a charrette, we've taken those in. Really, only one major thing's changed on the plan, and I'll discuss that. But my objective today is to get you up to date. First, the project is still alive. Mr. Henry has been a part of what we call well number three, where it's a requirement that we have two wells. We had two wells, but one didn't have a seal at the right depth. So, we drilled another well on site that fed into our distribution system. And currently, on the water, which is so important to this town and the livelihood, the property is blessed with water due to the two wells that exist on, how many of the road? Which road is it?
Darnett.
Darnett, too. And we have about 500 GPM there between two wells. We're using one of us at 150 GPM. And we drilled another well on site, which we've done, did some of the testing and have a case with Boston Henry, and that's producing about 53 GPM. And just to date for the record, we have far exceeded the water yield testing and water quality testing. And we have four times the amount of water we need for the project.
Could you please give us just a little detail background? 290, I think this is the airport project right now.
Correct, excuse me, it's on the airport. It's 70 acres, just to the west. I call it North and South runway.
The entrance will be from Algodolce Canyon.
That is correct.
I was at the meeting when they presented this to you, but I wasn't in the council. So, I knew what you're talking about.
Same entrance, same road.
I have no idea, so can you start from a little further back?
Sure. Then the runway goes north and south, and just west of the airport, and you pull in, come to the gate, and there's 70 acres right there. We proposed 30 lots, which on a standard of two acres, two acres net per home site. That's your standard. And we've ended up with 30 lots. It's a gated community because it's already gated. And the first 70 acres is all the way to the airport and goes about maybe 200 yards south of the road that comes, comes in, goes south, and goes east to the airport headquarters. We're around that and a little bit south of the road as far as the project. There's 30 lots proposed and we're going through the town map process, which Jane can speak further, we have questions. So, excuse me for not introducing the project in full, to have a map.
I didn't mean like that at this point.
I just asked for 15 minutes, so I didn't want to like have boards and pointers.
It's kind of a mini Sears column.
So, could I be helpful by opening up this map previous to the station?
And so, I'll continue as you can show the map. It's something that is to your hearts, because of the water. And the water, currently, the current status of the water is we are fully submitted to public health, which is in the lab. We met with them on September 27th, I mean, August 22nd. And we have fulfilled the requirements of the water. There are some additional information that we need. We're going to, we're going to be extra protective of the community as well as homeowners on storage capacity, distribution. We do have a, it wasn't required, but we went ahead into the distribution plans to the neighborhood to show where all the taps were. And we have actually far exceeded the requirement and actually are going to even continue far exceeded with some, our mutual water company, which we've set up, which allows a homeowners' association to sell water to residents, that's your term here. And that is 98% done. It's a live LLC corporation. And it's a part of the requirements for public health to submit to the state facility in Sacramento in order to get your state permit to sell water to the 30 residents that soon will live there.
In that, there, are they allowed to sell to any additional connections? Just strictly the ones that are contained within this development?
And eventually, the developer, they say bye-bye to Maine and they take over a certain percentage based on the HOAs. And there are strict restrictions on their maintenance and their testing, quarterly testing. Our water yield came up again at well over 200 GPM, maybe less than 50. Our water quality came up, no, no issues at all.
Accents, all the, all the nitrates.
No, not any. We were far below all the levels and that was a big concern. We have a stack of testing that's this thick that is at public health, Bridger Lab.
You're very lucky in that regard. We don't want to filter all the water.
No, and they actually make you on a quarterly basis test that.
That's amazing.
Actually, there's precautions we're going to take within the HOA, because that guidelines in housing, that even further that quality. But remember that water, everyone drinks bottled water, 90% of the same. But a shower, your body does adore water. So, you need to take that into mind. And just remember always, I've stated at this podium, that we're going to be water, conservation, conservation, conservation. That property is blessed with more water. I can tell you that we were under the most stringent, section 221, I'm right, section 221, pumping, where we pumped 72 hours.
Full drawdown.
Full drawdown with recapture at 90%, well within the limits. And even further, we tested that well one and well two is off-site. Well three is on-site. Well one and two didn't affect the other wells. So, very important for, I know people who have, who live on the hill, have well issues. Algodolce has a lake underneath this town and it's, it's a large body of water. That Bob from the vineyard was near positioned at one point. He did a huge study on where this water comes from and where the lake is, and it's about this thick. There is a way to take the 500 GPM, I mean, the 350 GPM well with a cap. So, we actually have 550 if we wanted, but we don't need 50, so we're good with 200. And again, what's most important is we've passed all of the water quality and water yield testing.
How deep are those?
Well two and well three we're using, well two's 150. And well three, well three is...
250.
Yeah. So, it's within the basin towards the runway. So, well two panned out to be about 50 GPM. And again, 72 hours of pumping to get 90% back within the time limit, well within the time limit, says that there's a lot of underground water.
Is that one question? Is, you know where the alfalfa field is? Is all the alfalfa field included in this project?
Yes, they're basically farming the 70 acres that were, except for this portion right here, sir. They're not farming this, but all of this and even south of here, they're farming that.
Okay. Because I've got a number of colleagues, people, you know, this, this year's been a real test so far and we're still being tested as far as water levels dropping in wells. And there is that we were certain that there was more than actual ground water, we're finding out we're drying up.
Well.
And so, that's one concern we have, or that comes at us, why, why are they still growing alfalfa there when the local wells are beginning to dry up? And I think there'll be a little cushion. In other words, there's no way homes are going to use as much water as the alfalfa is.
That's correct and...
That's going to welcome changing.
That's what I'm wondering, you know, that...
Well, how much is a 600 gallons a day?
Well, do you have, you said, if you're doing water conservation, do you have any maximum amount of water that each diggers or lot can use? Are you going to have any constraints that way? Or what are your thoughts as far as enforcing the conservation?
The first part of conservation is plant life. They will have a plant life, but they want to have a yard. There'll be, there'll be some law on it. The, the plant life that we plan on using would be acceptable to the area, it would be acceptable to code. I live in the desert, from things Arizona, we have plant life, conservation. I'm very used to that standard. And, and I'm a renewable energy person by company. I have solar plants and renewables, so I am, this is called green for whatever reason, dust control. So, what do we do to each two acre lot, which I think is large? And I've been told that that's not large here. But there has been, there has been a person here before saying, what was the dust concern during construction? Well, there's strict dust concerns and dust permits and dust fines during construction. But the water conservation starts with the receptacles and the plumbing, and it goes out to the yard and it goes to a type of plant life that you have. So, that is something in the next phase of planning that, when is the last time?
After planning the mission of the book, when we start to do the final drawings.
For the final renovation of planning. So, I just, I, I want to, and I'll let you fill the questions, of course, if you want or if you can. But again, the water is, I understand that this property is blessed with water and some people are, and I have compassion for that. But again, we're, we've far exceeded by four times the amount of water that we need versus that we have. And our replenishment is above normal replenishment due to the airport's runway and that water flow.
I think one of the biggest concerns, how is the problem, the biggest concern is going to be the water issue. Like, you know, you would be my neighbor, I'd be down the street, few houses, and I have a 592 foot deep well, water level is about 160 feet. And my next door, I get, you know, a lot of water, 24 gallons per minute, when we tested it back in 2001, so I haven't tested this since then. And the way my property was split ended with two wells. The other well was about the same depth, but didn't meet the requirements of the production at the time, which was 4 gallons per minute. It gets 7 gallons a day, same depth. Then my next door neighbor, I actually was listening, I had the property, I sold on Dale Road, 0.39 gallons from it at 450 feet. So, it's very spotty around here. If it was as simple as just hitting the aquifer and rain the town, I think a lot of people would have water.
So, aquifers, if you're studying water, are, there's different aquifers and are, our assessment is our aquifers do not affect anyone else's aquifer because of the runway. And we tested the other well one and two, which well one we're not using. We tested well two, section 22. We went beyond the requirement there. We did not draw down any other wells. There's a big pool of water somewhere in the middle of this town. And then other people suffer and I have compassion for that. And I've understood it. You know, the one thing that the airport has done during a fire or during an emergency is they provided water. They're the water source of the town. And so, Mr. Spears has, has demonstrated several times that you can use his water. And so, if we can come back with water, that's great, if there's any questions.
And each lot, obviously.
Public force and public health, those, the geotech and the percolation are both approved. Those are two reports approved. And I'm allowed to speak a little more technical about that.
Well, I mean, he's got it right. We have to do onsite wastewater treatment system report that gets reviewed by, by the Chantan Division of Public Health. So, it also gets reviewed by public health and it's going to... So it also gets reviewed by Public Health and it's going to be by home.
You're basically building a custom home thirty times. Each, you're doing everyone, nothing is done for the entire part, for the exception of the water system.
Correct.
Everything else you can. And the second thing I want to say real quick, like I said, the water usage will be the first thing. And I think it will be a welcome change to many people. I've heard a lot of people that I would characterize as totally pro-airport. They have negative remarks about the alfalfa field. And, uh, you know, pilots and, uh, as far as, so I think that might be a welcome change. Cause everyone knows that houses will use far less water. And, and, but another thing is, as a local Realtor, a, um, landscape and tree service contractor, what I've seen out here is most people, anytime you go in a new community, if I came to your community just, just speaking about something, you would see that maybe I was somewhat naive about a few things. And what I would say out here is, one thing people are quite naive about is they come and they put a lot of grass and they do a lot of greenery. Very quickly, two, three years later, that stuff is dead. And then they turn towards the kind of landscaping that you're used to in Arizona. So that's one thing that to keep in mind, I think, uh, the, the landscaping, whatever you do initially, if you, if you went more towards a southwestern type of landscaping, I think we have a long-term, much more longevity than putting a lot of grass and trees and greenery, things that are attractive to people initially, but down the line, I don't think will be sustainable. Everyone I've seen usually puts, puts the grass in. Five years later, it's replaced with a decorative rock on top of the wheat barrier. And, you know, cactus and things like that. And the trees that work out here, there's maybe ten trees, ten types of trees that work out here and that's it. You know, and I've, I've given classes on the, at the library and all that. And it's just, you know, eighteen years of experience of being out here, many trees just will not work out here. So that, that's mine as far as, you know, obviously you have the right to be working on that property. And I know you're going to be going through a lot of hoops, you know, jumping through the hoops for all this. And you go, you go through a gauntlet with the building and safety, regional planning, all of that. The only thing I think that, that I could give you as an advice of being in this field is that what you do for landscaping is going to turn out to be really important. How people out here that get this, everyone receives that. I think for whatever to do a public meeting, I think a lot of people have become very savvy about that, especially for the last few years.
Well, Mr. Porter, when you first said, uh, what we do in the Southwest.
Yeah.
We have rock. So I, I, I received that issue because I'd like, we have a lot of grass.
The whole thing is, everybody has rock.
We all have rock. You don't know rock. That's, that's perfect.
You put the wheat barrier and you mix, you mix maybe like the gold rock and the green rock. It just looks gorgeous and some, some of God and things like that.
I thought you were indicating that we had a lot of grass.
No, no, no.
I, I have, I have a twelve by twelve lot. I have beautiful.
Exactly. That's the kind of stuff, if you do those stuff, because people want a little green. And I think, uh, what happened to Sierra Colm for instance, they did a lot of greenery. They did, you know, huge.
And actually the fake grass is quite nice.
Nowadays.
The synthetic grass.
Yes, nowadays.
And the, the one thing that I would, um, ask nicely is that I don't think there's a comparison with the trials and tribulations that the counties went through with well issues, well development issues and the type of landscaping that was approved. I'm coming in here as a conservations. So that's, that's my commitment. That's what's going to happen. I don't come in front of public in a board and make a statement that isn't lived to. So my record is my record.
That'll be, that'll make a huge difference on how you're received by the community.
Well, we don't want dust in them. Because again, in my assessment, two acres per home. And I, and I see the landscape here, which is that they're lack of. And so it's windy here too. And so that, that has to create some problems with the cleaning of your home to the window. I mean, so, so I understand, and there was a person in here who talked about the dust. And I actually have a, a dust company, we have dust products and so, during construction and then post-construction. So, um, if you could just take my word on what we plan on doing there, that would be great.
I think during construction, the dust is very valid. Post-construction, I think it'll probably make you bigger deal out of it than is actual reality. Post-construction, what's a typical house out here is a lot of property, which is, it has to adhere to seasonal brush clearance. And then around the house, just, you know, like any large home you see in L.A. or anywhere, around the house there's some landscaping pool, whatever. But as far as the, down the line, I don't think dust is going to be an issue.
Well, I have a crest on the aspect. So if you crest, if you crest the earth.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I do, one thing I do understand as a developer, include dirt for neighborhoods and dust control, dust enhancement, dust capture. So, and that has been a concern from one of the neighbors right in that corner. And so I understand that if we could just say that the water, there's plenty of it. We're going to conserve it through plumbing fixtures, through water designs and through conservation and the landscape. I understand that and I would love to come to a town meeting and have a bunch of people upset with my development because of that issue. The next thing I'd like to move on to is also, before I move on to the biggest issue. Uh, I'm a solar contractor and own and operate solar plants. And I plan on putting a solar plant to provide the infrastructure with the power it needs to run it. So, and which is not a, a big load because our industry, like pumps and here and there. I mean, it, it's not a lot, but I'm a solar contractor and we do own about thirty plants. Anywhere from twelve megawatts to six kilowatts. So, um, now this is true Mary's plan. Mary's told me a few things in the past, this off the board. And I don't think you were on the board before. But number one, two acres of that. And we're trying to adhere to that and everything. And we do have one small issue. But do you think it's going to? I have a daughter who's just driving, so my phone's on. So excuse me for that. So, but we're not, we believe we have a resolve. So we're still true Mary to that, to that issue. And, uh, if we need some help here and there, we will address the board and for the town council and go from there. Let's talk about the biggest issue that I had in this room and that none of the rooms felt. And tonight it is, but let's just suppose it is. And the people who complained about the issue. And the issue was that, uh, we are a gated community. I do not own the property to the south, to the north, to the east, to the west. And, uh, I was not wanting to permit equestrian within the neighborhood. Because we felt at one point planes and horses did mix. Since then, uh, I have a personal experience with a friend who has a home with a stable that's attached. It's absolutely beautiful. And we are going to permit each residence, the permission in the HOA is to have equestrian. There'll be very strict guidelines. It won't be a barn in my little field. It'll be designed into the concept of the house. I have an example where you live in a barn. Obviously, this is a higher end neighborhood, very secure on an airport. And that issue is no longer an issue. So if the town council member would take notice, we are equestrian friendly. And we will permit the equestrian. And to date, that's been the largest issue. And just to be candid about the issue was that if you permitted me not to have equestrian, then I was at precedence on future entitlement cases, not to have equestrian, which is what the town's going to do. So, but we can resolve that with HOA, with design guidelines and with, within the HOA, the cleanup, because we don't want flies. So I control the HOA and I control the design guidelines. And to make a note, that is now permissible. And we can figure it out and how to do it. And so that's been the largest roar in the room. So that's to me resolved. So other than that, I haven't heard a bigger issue. And I'll, I'll let Janine also talk as well. As a part of our process moving through approval, ultimate approval, we need support in a letter of recommendation to.
Regional plan.
Yeah, I'll leave kind of a regional plan with your recommendation and support and approval of the project. So my first question is, of course, you need to think about that. We confer with one another. But what would be the protocol to getting that approval slash support? Then a letter from town council so that we can carry it to regional planning and then to our filing hearing? Uh, that this town supports this thirty, thirty lot project, seventy acre, thirty lots.
In any case, probably no, they don't require us to get your approval. They just want us to go consult with you. Mike wants your approval. He wants your, um, plan into the project, collaboration in the project. But we don't have to have a letter saying you approve just that we've met with you. But of course, we, we do want your approval.
Yeah, well, and I think, uh, we want, you know, the community's approval. Which basically, we represent the community. So what would have to happen would be a meeting that we all, with it already, with, with notice given, we're going to discuss this particular project they are seeking our approval. See what problem, you know, see what concerns people have and then deal with any issues they might have. And then during that meeting, we would take a vote of what the support is or what, what.
Opposition.
Opposition there is. And then we would not write a letter, we've never written a letter saying we supported any project. But we can state that we have a meeting, discussed this particular project at that meeting. These were the concerns that were brought up and these were the amount of people that were in favor of it. These are the ones that weren't in favor of it. And so in the past, when we've sent a letter like that to regional planning, they, they put that in their folder with everything else. And, uh, if we see there is a concern, well, like Lou hadn't even seen it and I didn't know anything about it. So it's something where I think awareness, um, I think what you're, what you're, uh, the two things I hear that sound good is the water conservation and the horses. Those two things though, I think, is what this community is mostly concerned about. So, uh, you know, at that meeting, I'm sure that would be the, the two main topics of discussion.
And would that meeting be another, so for, for everyone's information of the new council, council members, we've had one town council presentation and then one publication, publication for the town to come to a meeting. And.
We, I think that's across the board.
What was it? It's been, it's been three years, so it needs to happen again.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm sure if we took the poll from the last meeting, that there wouldn't be, there would be a fake, there would be a letter written, nothing fake, it would be opposed to the, to the law. So now I think that the worst situation thing is that for us, that was a major concern. I think we need to hold a meeting to see what the, what the opinion of the residents are.
Is that a town council meeting?
That would be a town.
We've agendaed that.
So.
In other words, we've agendaed, you're addressing us. Now we need to agendaize a, a community meeting after what we discussed tonight to get their opinion. So that we, basically, we can only hear what they're telling us.
Right.
And so for that letter to have any effect, we're not like the board of supervisors where we say, yeah, no, you can't have that. Yes, you can have that. What we can say is we had a meeting, this was a topic of discussion, uh, these are the items of concern. And we either support or you say, Mary, how does that work?
We neither support or oppose. Right. There were some community concerns that.
And we're that. You know, then that letter goes to regional planning and they know that we had a meeting here. They know that we had a meeting that consulted, they know that we're not acting on our own. And they know that this is the voice of our society.
Right.
So best of thing.
And would you do that in the next meeting on the second of October?
Probably going to be November. And then anybody who's concerned will be at that meeting. And so you don't need to do anything because right now you're doing, you're letting us know what your request is.
Yeah, we're, we're narrowing in as far as just brief schedule. We're trying to get this approved this year. And, uh, it, it's not Huntsaker or Lafferty holding the process up. It's the process holding the process up. So, but we're, we're pushing, you know, we have a pedal to the metal on the process. And we return volley when they have questions, we answer the questions. Our team's visiting the L.A. county people. I'm working very hard with Richard Lab and the water. I fly to see him personally. He has somebody on that project that's supposed to go up to the top of the state by October twenty-second. And, um, we're, after the well got resolved, uh, which took a, a long time in development, we are, we are moving as rapidly as possible. Because there's the second phase of this, which is the recordation of plat, which is the blueprints. And this is just, your process in California and the tenant bath process takes, takes you forty percent further than any other state I've worked in. So.
Well, it's in California.
Well, it, it, it's actually a good thing. It's actually a good thing because there's not any surprises to, later to me, that, that you wanted this or that. Cause you, you've tested it. You, you're actually, I'm at fifty percent in my state and you're eighty percent here. And then Huntsaker can do drawings based on all, she's already run through the mill and been hammered. You know, and been worked over and, uh, I mean, it's a tough brick down there. And, and they protect your state well. So let's say we get done thirteen or fourteen, then she has eighteen more months of planning.
And would, um.
And then we have some construction time before we can do this back and.
Would all the homes be constructed simultaneously or?
They'll be custom homes.
But is it, will they all be done at the same time or will they have phases?
It, it'll go as purchasers, but.
Probably very small phases.
Yeah.
Why do you, where's the?
Four, eight, fourteen. I'd say pretty much people, this laps round, got tired of big homes. So I'd say correct towards the rise to upper four, five. Four, five.
I have a simple question.
Sure.
You said it's a gated community with horses. And is this only for the homes, the trail, I'm thinking of somewhere, somewhere where the public can go in and out of those trails to go, listen to the other side.
No, no, we're not.
Does it want to be closed there?
It's already closed. It's already.
Oh, I was talking, okay.
No, no.
No, I understand that.
For, for protection of the, of the, of the, of the hangers and the plates.
Maybe like remove that gate and put it where at the front where the guard station is right now.
No, 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 no. It actually, it actually stays about, it moves a little bit. You still come, because there's residents there.
So if that, if I have a plane at the airport, I have to drive through the same, like now?
That's correct. That's correct. And, and, and there's, and there's fobs, uh, that allow you through the gate. So your fob is an airport hangar guy in your fob. And then we have two streets. We have one, two, three streets that will be gated and fobbed to where the airport people can't get in the three different streets. So it's very, the thing is very security. So it's very, the thing is very security conscious. Uh, and we do have trails within the community for walking and riding. So, uh, but we, I don't own the property to each side of me, so there's, you know, there's, there's no trail that goes through the community within there. And nor does there now.
Yeah, but it's good.
There's no change here, but thank you for the question.
Are you building the homes or are you just selling the land?
No, no, we plan on developing the project. We would probably partner with, but no, I, I, I see this as a jewel. And with thirty homes, we plan on being involved in the construction. And we have a strict design criteria for those homes. And I have something in mind that's just absolutely beautiful. And so I want to be a part of building that. It is not a project to entitle and sell. In Phoenix, that's exactly what I do though. I entitle it, entitle it, and sell it near Orton. But those are production lots, these are not production lots. This is a custom, custom, private neighborhood. This is a one of a kind neighborhood. And you can't find, the, the, the one thing you talk about, planes. In a lot of instances where the homeowner has a garage that he puts planes in, TSA doesn't want you to do it anymore for the security. And you can't get up the hill anyway, so whatever.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of infrastructure would need to be housed.
Elements of infrastructure, there's, there's power requirements on infrastructure.
You're just being general about the lights. Where the dark side is, where the...
I, I didn't say lights. I just said power, two, the elements of infrastructure.
Would you promote the homeowners to also...
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
The, uh, the, the price for KW gets so low right now, the models. I started when they were three dollars a lot and they're seventy, and by I have seventy cents a lot. So between your federal tax credits, if they get extended, through which we believe it will, or you shut down a whole industry and the depreciation factor, it, it, it still makes sense. And just, just remember, a home sitting with no AC on and you have six kilowatts in the home, your meter's spinning backwards because you have a refrigerator, maybe two, maybe your clock, your stereo, so...
LEDs or whatever.
Yeah, LED lights. And so your home's spinning backwards. And then once your AC turns on, it goes backwards. So California is a big promoter of solar. These homes could use eight, six kilo, I mean, six to eight kilowatts. And they will be pretty much off the grid.
That's power plants, if you're talking about, that, that'd be like they have in the schools, where they have an area where they use the area to cover their buses and stuff like that.
They, not carports, sir. We do a lot of carports.
Buses, vehicles.
The wind turbines are not proposed at this point. I mean, there's, the winds are not strong out there.
Thank God.
Excuse me.
Thank God.
Yeah.
You're not going to have turbines.
No, no turbines. Or no turbines either. People call it turbines. The, it'll be ground out. And the first thing that we do is not make it invasive to the eye. We try to hide it without shading it. Shade is not good for solar. So, but if it's not canopying and yes, then the individual home will be recommended to have a four to six kilowatt solar system on the roof, which these, it's, it's, it's not that much money. It's twelve thousand dollars. So, uh, and then by ten, if the tax credits and the depreciation, it's about six thousand. So, and it powers our house without the AC level, which is fifty percent of time here, right now. So, and your California rates also peak during the peak and solar is good for shading. So, uh, solar is part of my passion and I have multiple plans.
I have a question. A solar question. Is it true that we have a five to six watt panels per citizen? So the number panels on the roof would be introduced?
Well, but they get bigger. So there's sixty cell, seventy two cell. So if there's a five hundred, you know, my experience, uh, I've been a lot, been a lot behind there now for thirty years as well. So my experience in solar is, uh, is pretty adept as far as large systems. Home systems are pretty simple. It's a very small burner. You get six kilowatts, eight kilowatts, you have thirty modules, six hundred square feet. But on the south side, you can make it invasive. There are ways to, to clean it up and make it nice and, and ensure that you're...
Two thousand four, two thousand five, uh, we had about twenty six hundred students in our district. We're down to eleven eighty eight now. When my son started kindergarten in oh five, um, I would also mention we had sixty teachers. This year is going to be four teachers, combination classes.
Tell me that again, four? Tell me, wait, wait, wait.
We're, we're going to go back to two thousand five? Two thousand five. And I would also have mentioned we have sixty teachers. Okay? Um, three hundred and twenty seven students. And we're down to a hundred and thirty five students, four teachers.
Just four teachers?
Just four teachers. As low as, as low as, you know, nineteen fifties. So, um, our property, our, our population is down to eight, eleven eighty eight this year for the entire district, as opposed to a high of twenty six hundred students. So we're in a situation where, um, I think if we get closer to the nine hundred mark, the students will be in receivership. And what receivership means that we'll be absorbed by our districts. And, um, as much as the state has contributed to the situation where by reducing our budget, not only reducing our budget from the high of close to fourteen million down to, we're basically at nine million. We also have these deferments where they're saying, you know, if you work for me in July, I say, yeah, you earned that money, that's, that's yours. You're going to get it in October. When October comes, I say, you know, it's going to be the number. Well, the state is always paid eventually. But what that does is forces us to borrow human funds and come up with creative ways. So basically, first and foremost, pay, make, make payable, which is about close to ninety percent of our budget. You need sixty, eighty percent. So, you know, it is little for a bunch else at that point. So we're trying to do a bunch of different things to maintain, to keep our students, which we determined to be about twenty two hundred globally. And we've, we've gone to them to, to make that determination, um, partially based on the census and also based on other things. We have, we have, for instance, on a very small level, hired a, a PR consultant, which puts articles in the Country Journal. We've had things where, William has generously allowed the student advertising a paper to combat efforts that some other districts are, are taking in advertising to take our, our kids over from this place. So we're trying to come up with ways to make our students and our families, families be loyal to our district and see the district as more than just, just a school and obviously the educational is extremely important, but also as a community and as a... So one of the, one of the other things that we was, any school in LA County has a right to, um, allow repetition and facilitate repetition of a charter school. So we went with Albert Einstein Academy, that, that's certainly one of the best schools in, in California, based on their best scores and based on their model and is perceived as such. If, if I were to send out an email to the six hundred realtors in Santa Clarita, what is the best school in Santa Clarita? And I've done that, the answer would be Albert Einstein Academy. For some reason, they have that. They're out in, we facilitated the, the school out in Santa Clarita in this office. And we're thirteen hundred applicants for six hundred spots. So the county allowed them to, so then this was supposed to start beginning of September. The county, LA County allowed them to go ahead with their construction, gave them no problem. The city of Santa Clarita, and I personally, I'm a foundation for, for that district going out there. And we, we faced some really ugly things from the SABAS board and the being threatened with personal lawsuits. Weird stuff, right? So I don't really feel the past numbers to see that the city of Santa Clarita was the one that gave them trouble in building their school. So here they have these six hundred students that need to start school and where are they going to go? So we're, we're facing the situation that the charter that we, um, approved, we need to house them, right? Otherwise, those six hundred kids will have nowhere to go. Uh, one way we're going to be doing that, initially we thought about housing them all at that elementary school. And temporary, we were talking about towards maybe November or December. But we are going to house the first, kindergarten first and second graders in the Alcoy Elementary and the remainder of the sixth grade at the old Acton Elementary School, which is basically a district office and I would say about ninety percent of them.
Okay, I want to get this straight because I, there's tons of rumors out there.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So the Alcoy Elementary is going to have kindergarten first and second grade?
Yeah, almost kindergarten first, second will shoot it for.
Excuse me, they're here now. This is already started.
Yeah.
They're here now, it's not what will be.
Yeah. It started on, on...
Okay, so...
But it might change for the second grade, that's what we're saying. If it goes, if it goes well, we can, we can never too, if it doesn't, we're going to do the Acton...
Well, Acton's starting already.
Four, six.
Right now we have K first and second here. And the second one will change.
Three, four, five, six, three, sixth grade in Acton.
Right, at the Acton school.
Three, four, five, and six in Acton.
That, that, that school has some existing non-performing TSA conditions and TSA being a department of... But it works for a private, they, they owe us, they owe us ten to thirteen spots, depending on how you, you read their... They had allowed that. Any other student that applies to that will have to go through the lottery system. Those, those spots filled, they did honor their obligation. And they have to honor their obligation to create the same program they have there as the intended charter school at Alcoy Elementary. And then we're going to also implement them hopefully at other schools too. So we have a super studious crowd, I know the person that wants to be an engineer or wants, you know, is it, uh, maybe a person that wants their degree in linguistics or, you know, an A plus type of student. That would be the right, in my opinion, even though they do a lot of their students. In my opinion, that would be the right environment for it. Many, if people want options, even out in Santa Clarita, it's probably the best schools in California, people want options.
William? On August sixteenth, Judge Mike Kenny in Sacramento Superior Court ruled that the high speed rail authority abused its discretion by approving a funding plan and did not comply with requirements of the law. Do you have...
Yep.
Now, well, here's what, let me explain now. Backing up, first of all, the authority has been spending federal money and they're buying up land along the ninety nine for what's called the initial construction section. And this is this section, I've driven it, it's between Fresno to Madera. That's the first part that's going to be built. And I think it's going to be basically kind of a test track, test area, because it's a very short distance. I think it's nineteen miles, but maybe it's thirty if you go a little bit farther. And the legislature has appropriated approximately one billion dollars for this section. Okay, that's been done. However, Proposition 1A requires the authority to identify and build in it an initial operating section. It can be south or north. And they picked the south section. And that's going to be Bakersfield to Madera, I mean, to Merced, sorry, Bakersfield and Merced. And that's about a hundred and thirty miles. Trains have to actually operate on this section and they have to carry passengers. And it's estimated that would cost twenty six billion dollars, okay? That's the easiest, flattest section they can find. But Judge Kenny found that the authority had not identified the exact source of this twenty six billion dollars. All this, the authority said it would be, it would be a mix of state, federal, and private funds. That's all they literally said. So where are they going to get the money? What's the timeline for the money? Who's going to give the exact amount of money? This is what the judge objected to. And also objected to the fact that the authority did not complete certification while completion of all project level environmental requirements. So now, November eighth, the judge is going to issue remedies for this, for his ruling against the authority. So in other words, the authority's going to present their remedies and we'll see if the judge goes along or not. It could be very simple, like here's our timetable, here's where we're going to get the money, here's what we're going to do. Or he could be stricter, but we don't know. So we have to wait till November eighth on this phase of that lawsuit. There's a second part of the lawsuit. And this part of the lawsuit is coming up for its first hearing on September twenty seventh. And this phase explores the actual legality of the money that's being spent in Proposition 1A. Are, is the authority meeting the promises that we all voted on, if you vote in favor? Such, can the train meet the two hour, forty minute time, timeframe from Los Angeles to San Antonio? Can they do it?
You made a statement, can it go fast enough?
Yeah, can it go fast enough to do that with the route that they...
Can they say, can they do what they say they were going to do?
Can they do what they said they're going to do? They also said they would operate without a subsidy. And this is very, very suspicious because of their, however they did the calculations on the ridership. And so this is going to be a very, very interesting part of the second part of the lawsuit. So that's all that's happening. In the meantime, as William is very frustrated, we have to be diligent as, vigilant as the release of the draft EIR for Alcoy and Acton, which as far as I know is going to be late in the year, if not later. But when it does come out, we have to be prompt and we have to respond to it very quickly.
Okay, that's...
I have another question. That's what regards to the subsidy thing. Is it true that there's like no high speed rail or public train that does not run without a subsidy in existence today?
I'm sure that's true. They, and I believe the initial calculations were for the train that went from Paris to Belgium, to Brussels. And Europe is totally different than here. And they subsidize everything anyway. And the other, the other trains are in China and Japan.
The other question is on that, if they're making them adhere to what they said the, the funding was going to be, okay, as far as disclosing everything, is there any talk about them adhering to the eight billion dollar price tag that they put on that proposition? And as I recall, in that Proposition 1A, it said cost to taxpayers, uh, eight billion dollars, I believe is what the budget was. Now the budget is over ten times that. Is, is anybody bringing up that particular...
They have to come up with new funding plans and they've only come up with one. They have to come up with another funding plan just for this second phase here. And then they have to come up with funding plans for each section. And they have to identify the source and it's always going to be federal money. That's what they're hoping to get. Because the legislature could vote more money, but the big source of it's got to be federal. And that, that's a right question as well. But they, no, they have to do these funding programs and they haven't done.